And we are ready.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the city council meeting for December 9th, 2020. It's a little after 6 o'clock. We're here in the city council chambers, 345 High Street in Hamilton. Please do a roll call.
Pullman, present.
Here.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Nab.
Present.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Present.
Okay, we're going to start off with offering a prayer. Pardon my pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you are able. Almighty God, thank you for helping us to get through a difficult year. Help us to respect each other and respect the health challenges that we all face. Give strength to protect our public safety professionals, military personnel, and our healthcare workers. Pledge of allegiance is with the pride of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get to the special presentations, I want to have a moment of silence for somebody. But I want to read about her first. Many of you probably didn't know her. Susan Myers, Suma and Susan Cummins Valor Myers passed away. And a Hamilton High School graduate, went to Northwestern. Went to the interior designs Parson School in New York City. I didn't know that. She went to University of Geneva, Switzerland. I mean, there's a lot about the lady I didn't know. But what I knew was her Hamilton contacts, her Hamilton volunteerism, which is just amazing. I know this isn't everything, but Lane Public Library Board, Story Hamilton, Greedwood Cemetery Board, I've got a colleague in history project, Heritage Hall, Historical Societies of Butler County, Cincinnati, and Ohio. Animal Friends, Architectural Designer and View Board, member of the Presbyterian Church. I mean, this lady was involved in so many things and this gave so much of her time. I didn't know she also worked at Clausen's down in Cincinnati, which you remember Clausen's? If you're old enough to remember Clausen's, that was like, you know, the place for design in this entire, entire area. You may know her sister Joan Crane, who lives in Highland Park. Two great ladies and leaves a lot of children, grandchildren, and just an amazing lady. Plenty of moments of silence for her because I think she truly deserves it as a great volunteer. Just a few seconds, please. Thank you. Okay, we go to special presentations and we always start off with Health Commissioner Kay Farrar. Do you want to give us news?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, citizens of Hamilton. Going to give you an update on where we're at with COVID-19. Unfortunately, I don't like to be the bearer of bad news, but it's bad news tonight as well. So this is countywide data we're going to start off with. We just crossed over 20,000 cases for Butler County. Currently, one out of every 119 people in Butler County are actively infected currently with COVID-19. The countywide hospitalizations are at 717 and the countywide deaths are at 169. For the city of Hamilton data, we are receiving about 100 cases a day. If you remember from last Wednesday, it was 50 to 55, so we're in that doubling cycle right now. Families are still the most trackable transmission in the city. The city of Hamilton current cases is at 2,702. Last week's number was 2,026. The city of Hamilton deaths are at 41. I put an asterisk there. I did receive six over the weekend, at least by calls, but I'm waiting for the death certificates. I always first make sure that they do list COVID as a cause of death before I count them as a death. So we're at 41, but I do believe that number's higher. So by ZIP code 45011, which includes residents outside of the city, as you will see, there's 3,360 cases or 4,702.5 per 100,000 population. And the population for that area is 71,451. For our ZIP code 45013, there are 2,573 cases or 4,770.7 per 100,000 of population. That population of that area is 53,933. The ZIP code that mostly surrounds Lindenwald, 45015, there are 520 cases, 4,439.1 per 100,000 of population. And that population in that area is 11,714. Those are predominantly our citizens there. So again, I want to just highlight, you know, we're at a doubling state, so we're really at a cusp. Just reminding everyone, please stay safe, keep social distances, wear a mask, do what we can do to help this. These are the indicators for the state of Ohio. I do want to point this out. I always look at that 21-day trend. So you'll note that yesterday, there were 25,721 cases. But I do want to explain that big spike. So the CDC has for a long time counted people who are probable cases. A probable case is a person who had an antigen test, not a PCR test. Previously in the state of Ohio, in order to count as a case, we had to interview them and either do an epidemiological link to a positive case or show that they had signs and symptoms of COVID. As I've told you, we're way far behind. So the state of Ohio made the decision to align with the CDC and no longer do we have to do that extra step. They will still be probable cases. So anyone having an antigen test, not a PCR, is now counted in that data. And yesterday was the day they did that tie-in. So that's why you see that great big jump. We are really seeing in the state of Ohio about 10,000 new cases a day. So that's our true number, not the 25,721. The deaths currently today's number was 84. We've had a little dip down in the hospitalizations. Again, don't, you know, we, sometimes the data is a little bit behind right now because the public health departments are the ones that give that data to the state. And we're just not keeping up. So I know that data may change and fluctuate a little bit. And the ICU admissions as well, because today's data may eventually, if we put them in tomorrow, it may, it'll still go under today's date, but that number of 49 might rise. So vaccinations, are they safe? So I wanted to kind of tell you a little bit about how the vaccine or any vaccine is made. So this operation that we've developed COVID has been called Operation Warp Speed for COVID Vaccine. And that refers to the speed in which we've pushed things through. And there's a number of things that have helped us to push it through. It's not that steps were skipped, it's that we've done things differently than in the past. So number one, this has been a worldwide epidemic. It's a pandemic. And scientists from around the world have been simultaneously developing vaccines and assuring that safety and efficacy were set to the highest standards. So what you have is trials going on at two different locations, sometimes across the pond from each other, independent of each other, and then comparing notes. So they're making sure that everything lines up and it's the same. But previously, that's not, people didn't work well together. It's like, I want to own that vaccine, it's mine, and I'm not going to work with anybody else because I want the profits off of it. So some of the involved organizations are the Department of Health and Human Services, or HHS, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, the National Institute of Health, NIH, the Biomedical Advanced Research and Development Authority, or BARDA, and the Department of Defense. This has probably been the first vaccine ever developed where there were partnerships, both within the government and outside of the government. And that was all orchestrated to work more efficiently, quicker, and it's a new way to do things. So protocols were aligned for safety and efficacy and the trials had overseers from an independent group for quick response. There were no steps that were eliminated, they just occurred simultaneously. So if you can imagine the development of a vaccine, when it first comes out, a lot of times the manufacturer holds back because they don't want to lose money, right? So they'll go forward and they'll wait for approvals before they'll go on to the next step. But because this is a worldwide pandemic, there has been monies thrown at the development of this that has allowed them to do steps simultaneously instead of waiting, parked at stage one until they moved to stage two, and et cetera. So only the top promising candidates were chosen. So there were like 14 out of hundreds that submitted and said, I have an idea. So additional money then was given to those 14 and they were pushed along and said, keep going, we think you have a promising practice here. So currently, all the trials have been completed for Pfizer and Moderna. They have completed the phase three human trials and they have applied for emergency use authorization through the FDA. It's efficacy, which means how well is it preventing disease, is 95%. That's high, that's very, very high. It's a very good efficacy. So most of the vaccines for COVID-19 are in the phase three trials. The third company is AstraZeneca, which has worked in collaboration with Oxford University. Remember, I told you, things are different. You know, usually it's, it's the drug company on its own. They're not working with others, but they've really thrown in and tried to get things done quickly. So they're working with Oxford. They're showing right now about a 90% efficacy and they're close also to ask for an EUA. The trials of vaccines have been overseen by a totally independent data monitoring committee, which is made up of a group of career scientists who have expertise in clinicals trials and they have nothing to gain in the, in the development of these vaccines. Currently, the vaccines and the Related Biological Products Advisory Committee, which is that independent agency, is tasked at looking at the trials. And they're the ones that are looking at both Pfizer and Moderna. The plan is for them to meet this weekend and make either a recommendation to push through or not. They look at the trial, they look at every single case in the trial, how many completed the trial, and all the data associated with it for its efficacy and make sure everything was done on par. Meanwhile, Pfizer and Moderna haven't waited like they normally would and sat back. They've been manufacturing this vaccine. So it's sitting, ready to go. So that's that, I'm moving ahead, but it still hasn't been released because it hasn't gone through its proper channels yet. Phase one starts out very small. 90% of all vaccines for any illness stops in this phase. It just, they fail. So 90% of the companies that say, I got an idea, phase one, they're out. Phase two becomes a much larger scaled project where they're starting to test it. And then phase three is a very large scaled human trial phase. That's what Moderna, Pfizer, and et cetera have been doing. There have been people being vaccinated with those two vaccines for months. Way back in October and November, they've had those vaccines. There, it's a very rigorous, they have to agree, they get paid to participate, but they have to come daily, report symptoms. There's, there's a lot to being in a trial. So these have been all watched very closely. So how is this vaccine different than the flu vaccine? The process was not, was only compressed, but no steps were stopped, okay? So it didn't omit a step, it just compressed them. We were working twice as fast, smarter, and moving it forward. There should have been another, did I go out?
See, I'm not sure what's happening there.
Okay. So what are the potential side effects? There is pain in the injection site, fatigue, achy muscles and joints for a day or two. So those have been the chief complaints by people who've been vaccinated with it through the trials. It's pretty much true of what we see when we give somebody a flu vaccine. And really, those are good side effects because it's your body telling you that it's working. When a vaccine makes your arm sore, it's your arm making the antibodies and fighting and making, developing a resistance to. When you see that again, you know how to fight it. What kind of numbers are we requiring to loosen up on restrictions for social distancing and masking? Unfortunately, from what Dr. Fauci is saying, we have to be at about 70 to 80% coverage. So again, we're going to be in Operation Warp Speed for a while. We are bringing in partners, we're going to vaccinate as quick as we can. The administration of the vaccine will be done in tiers, with the most vulnerable being vaccinated first. Those will be our healthcare workers, our residents that are in long-term care facilities. They're the ones that are unfortunately getting very ill with this and possibly dying. So they will be the first to be vaccinated. The vaccine is hoping to be rolled out pending that final approval of this weekend by the VRBC AC on December 15th. So Tuesday. So there are 10 hospitals around the region. Our region, Region 6, is University Hospital. They will be receiving the Pfizer vaccine to roll out first. There are 98,000 vaccines coming to Ohio, that's our share. Divide it by 10, everybody can do the math. So there's only going to be 9,800 going to UC, but that's going to start it. The next ones will roll out very quickly. So keep tuned, we will definitely inform everyone when it's their turn. But please be patient, we were, we will be enacting what they have determined to be the most vulnerable. Any questions?
Any questions?
About the vaccine?
So I have one question, Mayor.
Please go ahead.
So will this have to happen every year or is this good forever?
That's something we don't really know. It is, Pfizer and Moderna are both two-dose vaccines. So you'll have to get two doses to hit that efficacy of 95%. We are hoping for lifelong immunity, but again, we've hoped that with other vaccines. That's why kiddos, little kids have to get the DTAP five times because we've learned that it wanes over time and your body kind of, you know, does something with it, that it's not as protective. It's also why the flu vaccine is now in a very concentrated form for older adults because they've learned that older adults need a more concentrated flu vaccine. So they, they will be studying this and watching it. It's not going to be like H1N1 where every year now, ever since H1N1 in 2009, I don't know if people know this, but H1N1 has been in every flu vaccine as one of the four components since then. So we're getting H1N1 yearly if you're getting a vaccine. But that's an influenza. So this is different. This is again a SARS coronavirus, so.
Thank you.
Now, I hope organizations and media do get vaccine education out there. I believe there's some misinformation.
There are.
Mis-trust going on. And, but misinformation, I think, develops the lack of trust. Our citizens have to educate, be educated before they make a decision. But I just heard some people about some dis, truly distrust of.
That's our, that's our next job. Just keep in mind, unfortunately, the very people who are doing all the contact tracing and handling all the cases are the same ones that have to push out the education. We're trying to grab partners and get other people to try to help us put the word out. There is a lot of commercials going out from the Ohio Department of Health with, you know, celebrities and et cetera that say, I'm going to get a flu vaccine and here's why. Trying to grab anybody that will, you know, different approaches for different people, but it is, it is a heavy lift right now to convince people. And I understand, they're, everyone's sick of this. I am in the front of the line. I am sick of it, so. But the vaccine is our way out. I do know that, so.
Education is super important and.
It is.
We have media who will join us.
Yep.
Any questions or comments? Okay, very much, Kay.
Thank you all.
Next, we have a Hamilton Active Transportation Plan presentation. Katie Alone. Let me mispronounce her last name.
I believe that's correct. Katie, if you are out there, you're welcome to share your screen and we can, I guess, start with your presentation.
Okay. It told me I can't share my screen while someone else is sharing.
All right, I'll take care of that. All right, give it a try this time.
All right. All right, can everyone see Hamilton Active Transportation Plan? All right. So, good evening, council members. I'm Katie Alone with Tool Design Group. I'm a planner. And Tool Design, in case any of you are not familiar, is a multimodal design firm. We specialize in active transportation, or in other words, walking and biking. So I'm going to give a little bit of an overview of the planning process and some of the outcomes that we had from the Active Transportation Plan. So I think you all know, I worked closely with Larry Bagford and Liz Hayden at the city. And we were hired as a consultant to really execute and help facilitate the plan. So this is a project timeline of the, of the entire project. And we formed an advisory team at the beginning of the process that really helped guide the process, was involved throughout the entire planning project. And stakeholders on this team included city staff, city engineers, the school district, BCRTA, ODOT District 8, the Greater Hamilton Safety Council, and other community members that were stakeholders in this plan. So next, we did an existing conditions analysis, which included field assessment, a public online survey, and going to neighborhood meetings to really understand how people were walking and biking in Hamilton right now. Then, based on all of the data that we collected, we created draft recommendations, including infrastructure recommendations and programmatic recommendations for the schools or things like expanding Safety Town. And then we went back out to the public to help understand where priorities lied. And then took all of that and finalized the plan, and that's where we are now. So I'm going to run through some highlights and then at the end, if there's any questions, let me know. So first, I wanted to point out that we really worked on building on Plan Hamilton, so the work that was already done. These are the goals outlined in the mobility section that I'm sure you're all familiar with. Improve public transportation, expanding bicycle infrastructure, and making Hamilton more walkable. The Active Transportation Plan really focused on bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, but then how to make connections to public transit. And this is several of the proposed recommendations. Areas of issue areas that were identified in the Plan Hamilton as part of the mobility section again. So there were desired bike routes that were identified, trails such as the Belt Line and the Miami to Miami connection, crossing or intersection conflict areas, which included both major roadway crossings and at-grade railroad crossings. And then also some areas of inadequate pedestrian facilities. And these were all really useful to, as a starting and jumping off point for the active transportation work that we were going to be doing. So public engagement was a really strong piece of the, of the planning process. The advisory team, as I mentioned before, was involved throughout. We had three main touchpoints with them. So at the beginning, with existing conditions, then with draft network and recommendations, and then third, with finalizing and understanding priorities. So they really helped guide the entire process. The first piece where we really went out to figure community, public engagement, was during that existing conditions phase. And again, that was really to understand what are people's barriers to walking and biking around Hamilton? What are, where are people biking and walking now? And so really understanding that before we started making recommendations. Larry actually attended several neighborhood meetings, I believe it was eight in total, to get feedback. And, and then we had an online public survey. And we had 330 people respond to that at the beginning. So we had a pretty good baseline to understand some of those existing conditions within the city. Then, after we created draft recommendations, we went out again with an online survey to really understand where priorities laid within the public. And so we had 154 people respond to that survey and pretty widespread representation. 16 of the 17 neighborhoods in Hamilton were represented in that. And that was during, when we went out that second time, that was during the pandemic. So we were pretty happy with that response rate since we were having to do a lot of switching to virtual and online engagement instead of in-person engagement. Some reoccurring community themes that came up, really strengthening those connections to the Great Miami River Trail. People wanted to see improvements along Route 127 or MLK, Route 4, High Street, and Main Street. The High Street Railroad underpass was brought up several times as being not really comfortable walking underneath. And then several missing sidewalks and sidewalk gaps, so part of that pedestrian network. Key destinations were also something that we asked the community about. So where are people going? Things that we heard, schools, the future Spooky Nook site, Route 4, businesses along Route 4, the Miami University campus. And I think to no surprise to the advisory team, Flubs Ice Cream was a top key destination. So once we gathered all of that baseline data, we wanted to start making recommendations. So we had several things we wanted to consider. This Active Transportation Plan is really intended to be for all ages and abilities. So when that comes to pedestrians, we're mostly talking about filling sidewalk gaps and intersection improvements. But when we're talking about bicyclists, it's a little bit more complicated because sometimes you have on-street facilities where you're mixing vehicular and bicyclists. So we like to use this diagram that shows several different types of bicyclists. First are those interested but concerned, and that's most people. It's going to be children, adults that are not comfortable riding with fast cars or lots of traffic. So most people when they're on a bike. The somewhat confident is, is much smaller. It's those people that might be okay on slightly higher volume road or slightly higher speed road. And then you have your highly confident, which is. your highly confident, which is a very small percentage of the population. They're willing to mix with traffic, willing to go on wide streets, high-volume streets. And for our plan, like I said, we wanted to focus on the interested but concerned, or those all ages and abilities. So when we're talking about facilities for bicycle facilities, specifically for that group, we're talking about your greenways or bicycle boulevards on your low-volume, low-speed roadways, separated bike lanes from vehicular traffic, your trails or more traditional trails are shared use paths, and not mixing bicyclists with high-speed traffic. So I wanted to go through a few facility example images before jump into specifically what we recommended in Hamilton. So for pedestrians, a lot of filling sidewalk gaps, you'll see that in our maps, then moving through bicycle infrastructure, starting with bicycle boulevards, again, those low, low-volume, low-speed roadways that people might be comfortable on mixing with vehicular traffic. Then, kind of building up to the most separated, so you have your bike lanes, then your buffered bike lanes, and then physically separated bike lanes, which can come in many different forms. Here you're seeing flexible delineators separating from vehicular traffic and providing that extra level of security and more comfort to the bicyclists and safer. And then even a step up from that would be your side path or shared use path, which is adjacent to a roadway but still totally separated from vehicular traffic, but accommodates bicyclists and pedestrians. And then the same with the shared use path or trail, which, again, is completely separated, kind of your traditional trail. And then we also made several recommendations on intersection improvements. So that included high-visibility crosswalks, in some places maybe curb extensions. Our RFBs are rectangular flashing beacons where if you push a button, the sign will flash, notifying motorists that pedestrians are crossing the street, and then a hawk signal or pedestrian hybrid beacon where, again, activated by pedestrians or bicyclists, but actually flashes red and then stops vehicular traffic. So jumping into what you probably all are very interested in is what we recommended in Hamilton. So overall, there's nearly 24 miles of on-street bicycle facilities that are proposed, 18 miles of off-street bicycle facilities, and these are your trails, shared use paths, about four miles of sidewalks, and 19, we call them spot improvements or intersection improvements. So for example, improving railroad crossings for pedestrians. And just a few, a few things, major proposed projects that really serve as spines of the entire network, and I know this is probably small on the screen, but I know you all have copies of the actual plan. So, the Belt Line, shared use path, adding shared use paths around the riverfront to really create a loop that connects the future Spooky Nook complex, Main Street businesses, and the downtown core, improvements on Route 4 to really make it a true multimodal corridor that accommodates pedestrians, bicyclists, and vehicular traffic, and then the Miami-to-Miami Trail connection. And I'm going to run quickly through a few priority projects. As I mentioned before, we identified projects that were top priorities with the public, but then also took in some data-driven factors such as a planning level cost, equity, and needs of the community, and other factors like that in addition to public, public priorities. And those were separated, that helped us separate the projects into buckets. So we had short-term, medium-term, and long-term. I'm just going to go over very few of the short-term and those top priorities. So top priorities in the community included, the very top priority was filling sidewalk gaps near Main, or on Main Street, near the Meyer, and then that would help connect several commercial uses along that corridor for residents, and then also there's the bus stop up at, at the Meyer that would be connecting into. And then the second top priority projects were filling sidewalk gaps around Northwest Washington Boulevard and Elkton Road, near the Hamilton High School freshman campus. And then third was the Belt Line Trail, which is already, I know, currently underway, so it was reassuring to hear from the public that that is a really top priority, and from our data-driven analysis, it was also falling towards the top of priority projects. And then two other priority projects that are more, or further east, was connecting, actually on the west side of the Great Miami River, from Pershing Avenue to the Pyramid Hill Sculpture Park, and then Route 4, which, again, back when we were talking about community input, was something that was a reoccurring theme, so really making that a multimodal corridor and having a shared use path, a sidewalk, and room for vehicular movement along that entire corridor. So I know that was a lot of information, very quickly, but I wanted to leave a few minutes for questions about the plan or the process itself. I know you all have access to the plan.
Want to say thank you, Katie, for a very informative presentation. Just seeing the, I guess, the priority ones mentioned, I think is very important for us to look at, focus on, and we do appreciate that, and we'll just kind of see what happens.
Great.
Any questions or comments?
Great.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Thanks for having me.
Okay, we next go to Audience of Citizens, and of course, we strongly, strongly encourage social distancing and health safety reasons, and encourage emails to the city clerk as opposed to appearing at council meetings. My understanding, there's been no emails have been received by the city clerk, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. And looking at the Audience of Citizen book, has anybody signed the Audience of Citizens book? And there's no one in the hallway, I don't believe, at this time? Okay, so, that takes care of Audience of Citizens. We go to the Consent Agenda, and that includes meeting minutes, all staff reports, caucus reports, and informational report on Laurel Avenue, no parking restrictions. Coming in the hall, we are not going to be doing that at this time. So, the Caucus Agenda, I'll read the topics real quick. Sanitary Sewer Lining Project, Street Siphon Modifications, repairs to the Hydraulic Canal Bridge on North Third Street, conditional use for a drive-through at 1199 Main Street, which is Domino's, the HUGS request for variance and conditional use approval for a repurposed shipping container for storage of garden equipment and supplies, and lastly, a conditional use to operate an automotive repair business at 1040 Cleveland Avenue. So, is there a motion regarding the Caucus Agenda at this time? Is that an agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move that with the exception of the items so noted, Council receive the reports of the consent agenda and concur on the recommendations.
Second.
Motion, Councilmember Var, Vaughn, seconded by Vice Mayor Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried.
Carried.
We now go to Council Acts pertaining to legislative items, and I'll accept the motion on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion, I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of Council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go to pending legislation. Agenda item number seven, second reading of emergency ordinance regarding medical and hospitalization insurance.
An emergency ordinance amending Section 181.24 of Chapter 181 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio regarding medical and hospitalization insurance. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion, Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Brown. Any questions or comments about number seven? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Motion, oh, excuse me, ordinance adopted, seven zero.
Thank you. Number eight, emergency ordinance, second reading, involving the Community Improvement Corporation and some grants.
An emergency ordinance affirming the designation of the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio as the city's agency whose mission is to advance, encourage, and promote the industrial, economic, commercial, and civic development of the community, and authorize a grant or grants an aggregate amount not to exceed $500,000 to be made to the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio for public purposes and declaring an emergency. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion, Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Any discussion or comment about this emergency ordinance? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, seven zero.
We go to Agenda Item Number 10, which is an ordinance, second reading, involving our budget for 2021.
An ordinance making appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton, Ohio during fiscal year ending in, ending December 31st, 2021. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Ryan, seconded by Vice Mayor Pullman. Discussions, questions about this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
We go to Agenda Item Number 12, two readings and ordinance involving supplemental appropriations.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton during fiscal year ending December 31st, 2020.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
I'd like to make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Any discussion or comment about this emergency ordinance? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Second reading of that emergency ordinance.
An ordinance approving a request for conditional use certificate to operate an automotive repair business at 1517 Dixie Highway in two variances to setback in landscaping and parking of vehicles, property zoned I-2 Industrial Zoning District situated in the 6th Ward, City of Hamilton, Ohio. This is two readings for tonight, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Motion, Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Now go to Agenda Item Number 12, two readings and ordinance involving supplemental appropriations.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton during fiscal year ending December 31st, 2020.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
I'd like to make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Any discussion or comment about this emergency ordinance? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Second reading of that ordinance, please.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2020.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
I'd like to make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Nab. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
We go to Agenda Item Number 13, which is the first reading of an ordinance involving a series of parcels on South Erie Boulevard, changing the zoning from I-2 Industrial to BPD Business Plan Development.
An ordinance amending the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance number 7305 by changing the zoning of properties 1710 South Erie Boulevard, 1700 South Erie Boulevard, 1746 South Erie Boulevard, 1700 South Erie Boulevard, 1746 South Erie Boulevard, 1766 South Erie P6451043000009, P6451043000011, P65104300008, P6451043000010, changing the zoning from I-2 Industrial to BPD Business Plan Development Zoning District situated in the 5th Ward, City of Hamilton, Ohio. Richard L. Jones, applicant, first reading.
Okay, that was a good first reading. It's the ghost of Nick Grukus visiting us, I believe, tonight. We'll go to Agenda Item Number 14, which is two readings of emergency ordinance.
That's your initiation, Daniel.
Yep, involving a Gulfview Drive tax increment financing.
An emergency ordinance creating the Gulfview Tax Increment Financing Incentive District, declaring improvements to parcels within the incentive district to be of public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those services payments, specifying the public infrastructure improvements that benefit or serve parcels in the incentive district, and declaring an emergency. Two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
I'd like to make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Thank you. Second reading of the emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance creating the Gulfview Drive Tax Increment Financing Incentive District, declaring improvements to the parcels within incentive district to be of public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those service payments, specifying the public infrastructure improvements that benefit or serve parcels in the incentive district, and declaring an emergency. Second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
I'd like to make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Motion, Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Brown. Any discussion or comment about this particular emergency ordinance, Agenda Item Number 14? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, seven zero.
We go to Agenda Item Number 15, which is a resolution involving a liquor permit at 20 South Third Street.
A resolution objecting to the application for a new D1, D2, D3, D6 liquor permit by P. Andlin Developments, Hamilton Main Street LLC, DBA Tequila Harry's, at 20 South Third Street, Hamilton, Ohio. Street, Hamilton, Ohio, 45011, and directing the city clerk to request a hearing to determine whether such new liquor permit request shall be denied.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I move that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Ryan, seconded by Councilmember Knab. Any questions about this particular resolution at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
So does the establishment know what needs to happen? I guess I'm not understanding the second part, where it says a hearing may be requested.
Yeah, I think there needs to be a little bit of explanation about this. We haven't had many of these in the last year where there's been an objection, much less any kind of a hearing. Someone from law kind of give us a background on this. I know they've done a lot of work over there, a lot of it themselves, and just a little bit of an idea of the background behind this resolution, and maybe was it in the report? Maybe add a little bit to that if you could.
I couldn't find it.
So they have, all of the adjutants come from the fire department on this one, and the health department, and the building department. So the plans that they submitted to building can't be approved yet, and they don't have plans submitted yet to health. And so all those departments have been in touch with the owner in terms of what they need. I think they're just a little bit too early along in the process for us to approve that. That doesn't mean that they can't get that together at a later date and still get that. But we don't, you know, work with the property owner on the hearing. The Liquor Commission reaches out with respect to that. And in many instances, even if we have a hearing, a lot of the issues are typically corrected, you know, before we get to that stage. And then in that case, we can, you know, withdraw objection. But if, you know, proceed, if they still try to proceed based upon what they have and no changes have been made, then we have to continue on with the hearing. So just by way of example, we have not had a hearing in the last two years, so.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Well, it sounds like the application may have been premature, and they're working on their checklist, basically. They're working on their checklist, sounds like, of what they have to do.
That is correct.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments about this particular resolution? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Go to agenda item number 16, which is a resolution involving appointments to the other county TID, Board of Trustees.
A resolution appointing Douglas Fields and Eric Pullman to serve on the Board of Trustees of the Butler County Transportation Improvement District for the term commencing January 1, 2021, and terminating December 31, 2022.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Knab.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Knab, seconded by Councilmember Fear. Any discussion about this resolution of appointments? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Good to agenda item number 17, the resolution establishing the city council regular meeting dates for 2021.
A resolution establishing the City of Hamilton, Ohio, city council regular meeting dates for the calendar year 2021.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Any discussion or comment about this resolution and our meeting dates for 2021? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Okay. Then item number 18, I'm going to read into the record. I know.
Yeah. A resolution appointing Rob Brown, excuse me, Robert Brown to serve on the Board of Directors of the Ohio Kentucky Indiana OKI Regional Council of Governments for the term commencing January 1, 2021, and terminating December 31, 2021.
Mr. Mayor.
Let's have, I want to discuss a couple things real quick on this one. And this is the time of year when we start making appointments to various boards and commissions and the like. And I noticed on 19, we're appointing someone to the ordinance review commission. And it's kind of a planning commission. The issue is sometimes we don't get enough people there for a quorum, or there's illness and things like that occur. And 18 appoints one person, and 19 appoints one person. At least we've got like two people on the TID one, the one we just voted on.
Right.
So for 18, and maybe for 19, and I'm not sure when we can probably do 19 because there's an open seat right now, I think. Is that correct?
There is.
Your person, Fear. Most of these, or the ones we have coming up, it might be an idea that we go ahead and think about a alternate. So, and actually.
Mr. Mayor, I think I'm alternate for OKI.
Are you? That was.
I think I am, yeah.
And that's just, can we do an amendment of that motion now and get this thing done now? Is that okay? Madam Law Director, get this thing approved with an alternate on 18, and then 19, we have to maybe recruit somebody to join that committee. Can we add an alternate to this one at this time? Madam Law Director?
Yeah, if you want to do that tonight, we can pull it up and revise it to insert that language. The city clerk can do that, and we can do that before it's read.
Would it print a copy to do that?
No, we can, as long as we have it and we share it with council, that's fine. But if this council wants to do that, or we want to bring it back, or we can just approve it as is.
Do we have to have an alternate if Carla is already alternate?
Well, probably we do, because I think these minutes probably go to OKI of appointment.
Daniel, can you put it on the screen right now and read it?
Yeah.
It's done.
That's publishing as far as I'm concerned. Is that good enough, Madam Law Director?
That, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
And I'm not, I can't remember if OKI is one that requires the alternate, or if it's just kind of our pleasure. I'm not sure of that.
Let's just see if we can do that, and then 19, we have to recruit somebody because we got an empty seat on that one, so we can't really even do. We can vote Peter Akuff on 19, but we can't have another name because we're not sure who's even interested at this point in time. If you're interested, we already talked about it.
Right. And I think we do have somebody. And the other one, while we're talking about it, is shouldn't there be one for the JED Board? What's, because I think that.
What's, is this the year for the JED Board? I'm not even sure about that.
Well, even if it's not the year.
We can do it January, then.
I've stepped down, and Eric.
I'm on JED.
Yeah.
And I'm on TID, too.
Right. But I don't know that we've done a resolution for the JED Board also.
I don't think we have, to be honest with you.
Don't we normally do those first meeting in January?
I guess some may require it before January. I know we usually have our meeting in January, where we do talk about appointments and who wants to be on what boards, but for some reason, these are on now, and it might be because our first meeting might be earlier in January.
Yeah, we can, we can look at the JED after this meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's get OKI done, because we've had a good seat there and good input there. And if we get that typed up, that would be great, so there'd be no question about OKI.
I would just go down.
Just making a section. I believe we did appointments last December when we got sworn in. We did it that time.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, but isn't that normally when we, isn't it every two years, like at the end of a new election?
That's what I thought.
I think that's when we do it.
Every two years, correct.
So we wouldn't be doing it this January.
And I know there are other incidental committees that we do work on each January.
After the election in November in 2021, then we'll be doing them all, we'll do quite a lot of them all over again.
Doing all of them again.
For, in January 2022.
Yes, if you can just make it a little bit bigger and highlight the changes.
The record reflects that we have pulled up the legislation, and on the screen, all of council's looking at section one, whereby it does name an alternate, Councilmember Carla Fear, that we've actually had talked about even prior to this meeting, our organizational meetings, our organizational discussions at least. Everybody will take a second to take a look at section one up there. We'll ask you to amend your motion there, Vice Mayor Pullman, if you would, if you want to.
We're going to change the title as well. Is that what you want, or do you just want it included in the legislation so that the direction is clear?
You want to go ahead and change the title. If you've got a couple seconds, just go ahead and do that now, so if there's no question about it, at OKI or anybody else, it'll be in the title, and it'll be in the long form of the higher ordinance, our resolution, excuse me. Thanks for your quick action on this, Mr. Clerk, because I don't think we've done this a whole lot of times, but we've done it before.
So, Mr. Mayor, should we save 19 until we have the alternate?
Well, we're going to have a private meeting in January, that, maybe that first, or second.
Isn't usually the, isn't it usually the third or in between the council meetings?
If you want to go ahead and point Peter now, we'll just get that, get that part of it done. You know, if you get it done, let's get that part done at least now. But we do need, it's like planning commission, we've got a good group of alternates, planning commission. Somebody wants to not have a meeting, just do the not have a forum.
Yeah. Well, and I've never had to go because Bob's always there, so. Or Zooming or whatever. Is that, are you guys actually meeting, or is it Zooming? Yeah. Not pretty.
Okay. And let the record reflect that we have changed the title of the resolution to include an alternate, and we'll have to take a look at all these that we're going to be doing in January to make sure we have alternates. Okay, is there a, would you like to amend your motion, Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Like to make a motion that the resolution be adopted with the changes.
Why don't we, Robert, read it in the record, Mr. City Clerk, if you would.
A resolution appointing Robert Brown as the representative on the Board of Directors of the Ohio Kentucky Indiana OKI Regional Council of Governments, and Carla Fear as alternate for the term commencing January 1, 2021, and terminating December 31, 2021.
Now, you want me to do the motion?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. I'd like to make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Knab. Any discussion about the resolution that appears in agenda item number 18, as it's been amended and published to us at the council meeting? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Let's go to agenda number 19, and let's get that appointment done while we have names for the others to hopefully join us on ordinance review. Number 19 is a resolution appointing Peter Akuff, ordinance review commission. So I'm going to read that into the record, Mr. City Clerk.
A resolution to appoint Peter Akuff to serve on the ordinance review commission of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, for a term commencing January 1, 2021, and terminating December 31, 2021.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. Any discussion about this appointment of Peter Akuff, ordinance review commission? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Okay, that takes care of our business, except for some of the audience at city manager. Any comments at all, sir?
No, Fear.
Okay. Audience of city council, if I want to bring anything to each other's attention and to the public's attention. Hey, everybody has a safe Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, and a Happy New Year 2021 that's actually written in 2020 from a lot of reasons. Okay, executive session, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir.
Okay, no request for that. How about a motion that we adjourn for 2020 business?
Delude.
Second.
Councilmember Knab, seconded by Councilmember Fear. Roll call vote on that motion to adjourn, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Seven oh five, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, and thank you, TV Hamilton.
Relax.
We're.